What's the problem?
What's that? We're all set? Okay, let's do it. Alrighty. Uh, Planning Commission meeting, December 5th, 2024. I call this meeting to order. Paul, may we please have the roll call?
Howdy, Case.
Absent.
Vic Cornet.
Here.
John Grant.
Here.
Yeah, Penya is absent. Carrie Pippenich.
Here.
Popoff.
Here.
Nick Fratella is absent.
Alright, thank you. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Thank you. Next is the approval of the agenda. If all have reviewed the, reviewed the agenda, may I please have a motion to approve and a second?
So moved?
Second.
Excellent. The approval, the, to, the agenda has been motioned to be approved with a second. All in favor to approve the agenda, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, approval of minutes from both the August 15th and the November 7th meeting. Uh, for those who were present, may we please have a motion to approve those minutes with a second? Oh, do we need to do them separately? Okay, so August 15th, please.
I move to accept August 15th.
I'll second that. All in favor of accept, uh, approving the minutes from the August 15th meeting, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Were you not here?
Have to abstain. Yeah, I wasn't.
Okay.
Before I was appointed.
Okay. Um, next is the approval of minutes from the November 7th meeting. May I please have a motion to approve those minutes with a second?
So moved.
I'll second that. The minutes from the November 7th meeting have been moved to be approved and seconded. All in favor of approving the minutes from the November 7th meeting, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, I can't, I can't because I wasn't here. It says I was present, but I actually wasn't here, so I have to abstain.
Does it say, hi, this is Jonathan. Uh, does it say that you were present and you weren't present?
Correct.
Okay, I think it might be appropriate. Were those minutes just approved just now?
Yeah.
Okay, I think it would be appropriate just to, uh, call for a reapproval and to make that correction for the record. And, um, for the record, any planning commissioner can, can vote to approve the minutes, even if you weren't in attendance. Um, so long as you watched the video or otherwise, well, so long as you watched the video, but if, if you weren't there, we need to correct that in the minutes.
Yeah, I didn't come, so that would be great.
Totally. Okay, an, an appropriate motion will be, you know, moved to, uh, reapprove the minutes as amended with the, with the modification being, um, Commissioner, is that Case? Commissioner Case is absent.
I make a motion to reapprove the minutes with the modification that Commissioner Case was absent.
I'll second.
Excellent. All in favor of approving the November 7th meeting with that modification, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Next is the time for public comment. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject that does not later appear on the agenda. Five minutes per person will be allowed. When coming up and speaking, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Richard Wolf. The Dallas, Oregon. Um, one, one question I have is that when I Google it, um, being the Dallas City Planning Department, it comes up Community Development Department. Would you know why that is? That's an office downstairs. Would you know why that is?
I don't know. Yeah, yeah. So the Community Development Department is effectively an umbrella department that oversees planning, historic preservation, economic development, and urban renewal.
Why is it different from Oregon and Portland, other cities? Why are we a community development entity instead of planning department?
Uh, it depends on which jurisdiction you're talking about. There's community development departments all over. There's a community development department. I know there was a job posting just today in the city of Wilsonville for community development.
Okay.
So it's, it's really just based on the, the city that you're in.
Does it help us? Oops, sorry. Does it help us?
Does it help us?
Yeah, to do it differently.
Indeed. This way. Um, I think in the sense that you can have multiple departments under one roof. Yeah, that is probably a bit more efficient and effective.
Okay, do we, uh, in our system, the Community Development Department, uh, some planning departments, uh, oversee safety? Does this setup, I don't know, the, the, the Community Development Department and Combined Planning Department oversee safety?
Um, are you talking fire life safety, a building type safety, or are you talking, um, employment safety?
Um, mine's a retaining wall over here at the intersection of, uh, Third and Fourth and Sixth at the veterinary, uh, Veterans Clinic for the Animals, the brick building. Yeah, right there, uh, there's a compromised retaining wall. It's a historic wall. Uh, does planning oversee historic entities or town?
Uh, so the Community Development Department oversees historic.
Okay, so that isn't.
Entirely sure if we would. I, I think it was this, that the intersection, uh, where third place, third place and fourth comes together by chance?
Right across from the veterinary clinic for the animals.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, this is actually something on, I think, I believe this is on private property, um, and retaining walls are kind of a little bit of a gray area.
How do we get to the bottom of that? Because there's five spots on that wall that has been compromised as a, as a guardrail for a traffic. And if it gets hits, again, hit again, the drop off down to the homeowner's yard is about 10 foot.
Yeah, it would be ultimately up to the property owner to fix the wall. And this is what we've discussed in the past on this specific property.
Okay, that would be, the spot that I'm talking about is owned by the Parks and Recreation?
Yeah, so ultimately, when you have a retaining wall, unless that retaining wall is on a city right of way, it would effectively be on the responsibility of the property owner who has that retaining wall.
Are you in, is that correct, Mr. Attorney? Are you still there?
I'm still here.
Uh, Mr. Carrera, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I, I guess I don't understand the question. Uh, Chair Cornet, do you want me to give legal advice on this issue?
Well, um, my question is.
Yeah.
My question is, the retaining wall is a traffic barrier that has a five compromised locations. There's a 10-foot drop off. It's adjoining a Parks and Recreation property and other properties. Uh, but it's also adjoining a sidewalk, which is a city property. Are both entities responsible? Or is there one in particular that needs to take that threshold?
I can't, I can't picture it in my mind. Um, so I'll give general counsel to the commission and just to answer your question, Mr. Wolf, um, generally, without having a map in front of me or being there, uh, but just generally, if something is on a person's property, it's, it's that person's responsibility. Um, fences are typically a civil matter. Fence disputes are very common between neighbors. Um, uh, it, it's all very fact dependent. There's no, there's no quick and easy way to slice that. Um, but if the idea here is that the government, you know, let alone the city, but just the, the government, uh, is going to enforce, you know, um, structural codes on private property, they can. Um, the city doesn't. That's typically a function of Wasco County Building Codes. Um, I think that's actually an exclusive function of the State Building Codes Department through Wasco County.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That's five minutes. Uh, it sounds like that's a property owner issue at the end of the day.
Yeah, who's, who's accountable when someone goes off with their? Uh, Parks and Recreation, is that us or is that a separate thing too, like private or what?
Uh, who's responsible? The Parks and Recreation, Northern Wasco County Parks and Recreation Department is a standalone taxing district, has nothing to do with the city of the Dals or Wasco County.
Does it have anything to do with the retaining wall?
Again, I, I can't picture it in my mind and I don't have a map in front of me.
Well, can I get you a map and then we can find out?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll get a hold of you tomorrow. Thank you. But I, I pass off a lot of my time. I like the one, uh, 20 seconds.
Okay.
The, uh, the guidelines that you guys follow includes the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you don't follow the guidelines, how many does it take before we don't have that guideline line anymore, no matter what it is? And so if, if we don't follow the guidelines as a unit, as a whole, then are the people that are positioned in these positions in our city still allowed to carry a boat? And I would bring that back to the next meeting also and ask Mr. Carrera that also. But I see that type of thing going on and if whichever way it is, but we can't have it this way and that way. We have guidelines or we don't, and we can't just come up and do and say as we wish, my time's over. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, please come up. Uh, just please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm Chuck Gomez, owner of the Granada Theater and a resident here in the Dals, Oregon, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to.
Pardon me?
Uh, my address is, um, 221 East Second Street, and my home address is 827 Seventh, East Seventh Street. And I want to thank you for the opportunity, for the public comments that are allotted to our citizens here in town. My comments, uh, quickly refer to the Basalt Commons project once again. And let me preface my statement by saying I am 110% for the project. I'm not against the project at all, but I do have grave concerns with the passing of the variance for changing certain aspects of that project. Now, the project was initially, uh, brought to our attention and the vote, uh, month and a half or so ago by the Planning Commission, the recommendation to the city council was based on a dire need for, uh, rental property here in the Dals, a dire need. Well, upon research, the greatest need of property, of rental property, is two-bedroom apartments. That is the greatest need that we have, the least available in town. However, the variance struck down a, a large number percentage of those two-bedroom units in the Basalt Commons and would be replacing those with one-bedroom or studio apartments. So I felt that was somewhat misleading in the variance. The other, uh, part of the, um, portion of the variance that I had a concern was, was with the increase of the property size from a three-story building to a 65-foot story building, giving you the footprint equivalent to the Sunshine Mill. That's about the same size as the building that now has had its variance approved on. But the parking issue for that, uh, we've doubled the size of the building through the variance and yet, uh, uh, greatly reduced the parking requirement for it. Uh, it was not too many years ago, uh, that the gentleman that owned the property next adjacent to the used car parking lot, right next to the Ace Hardware, uh, came to this very planning commission in hopes of developing his lot with a storefront on the main floor and an apartment on the second floor with two parking spots available for that building. And the planning commission, uh, turned down his request because they felt and stated that it didn't have adequate parking to be developed. Well, when we have a property of 130 units and don't even have, uh, 130 parking spots, I feel that we are shortchanging our downtown for adequate parking, for business, for commerce. And the planning commission, uh, made its recommendation based on, uh, the initial parking survey. But the final parking survey didn't, uh, was not presented, and I was at that meeting and heard every single word of it. Uh, it was an excellent survey, but the 900 parking spots that are in the downtown that the planning commission, uh, based its recommendation on, uh, turns out that that's all the information we had at that initial meeting. Uh, the parking survey has now found that there are 900 parking spots, yet three of, 300 of them are devoted to uh, uh, daily workers that work downtown. That was not brought up when the planning commission made its recommendation for the variance, increasing the size of the building, increasing the number of the residences, residencies, and a decreasing the parking numbers. We also have found from the final parking survey that the, many of the, uh, the majority of the remaining parking spots have cars changing those parking spots 5.66 times a day. 5.66 times a day, that parking spot is filled, emptied, filled, emptied. And now we also have the added burden of losing the parking that's going to be, uh, lost for the Federal Street Plaza parking. That's another 20 spots approximately. So all those, uh, points for lost parking, I felt, weren't taken or available for consideration when the recommendation was initially made to the city council for the, uh, passing of the variance for the Basalt Commons. And it would feel, I feel that it would be, uh, beneficial to the community if we were to have a slight moratorium and review the passing of the variance for the increase, size and decrease parking for the Basalt Commons. And I thank each and every one of you for this opportunity to voice my opinion on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to touch on a couple of those things?
Um,
we can, we can.
Yes, but for the record, it's not a conversation.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can, I can. Commenting on the comments, but the comments are.
Yep.
Noted.
Yep. I just, I think there's some information in there that I think was a little misconstrued, so, um, I'd be happy to have a conversation with you, Mr. Gomez. I think some of these numbers, I worked pretty heavily on these parking studies and, uh, the numbers are, are a bit surprising to me. I've worked pretty substantially on these parking studies. Uh, also, this was not a variance that was approved. Uh, there was never any consideration to decrease parking, so there's just a couple of things in here. I don't think there was ever a consideration to strike down two bedrooms. Um, I would be great to have the property owner's address of the individual who went to Planning Commission just a couple of years ago and was denied this unit. I'd love to take a look at that. Doesn't ring a bell in my head. Been here for six and a half years. I'd happy to take a look at it. Feel free to stop by the office. If you have some more of that information, I would really like to look that in, information up for you so you can get all the right information. You bet.
I, I did want to touch on that, uh, uh, the prior, um, person that was, was that Senator Daniel Bottom, who was? Okay.
Alright, perfect. Thank you for the public comment. Uh, we're going to move on to the discussion item. It's 2024-25 Review and Outlook. So we got to, kind of hear about the plan of what's coming next.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Commissioners, Chair Cornet, Joshua Chandler, Community Development Department, um, I just wanted to go over, um, kind of what we've been working on. I know we've had a, kind of, you know, haven't had a lot of meetings this last year. Um, department's still very busy, but just wanted to go over some of these things with you. Uh, as you know, the Planning Commission plays a key role in long-range planning in this community uh, to ensure that the Dals municipal code's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh, both these documents can be amended at times depending on the need of the community or to follow state and federal guidelines. Um, in recent years, the, this, this commission and staff has worked on, uh, have worked on multiple code amendments. Most recently, uh, there was the, um, in, in late 2023, early 2024, we had the, um, adoption of the Housing Production Strategy. And then we also worked on adopting new regulations for our RV park code. So this was all, um, work that we had, uh, touched on just in this last year. Um, the objective of tonight's meeting really is to just provide you with, uh, this commission with an, with an overview, uh, recap of residential development activity. Really wanted to touch on that, including building permits, multifamily projects, land division approvals, as well as providing updates on the comp plan and code amendment initiatives previously discussed. Uh, despite some staffing constraints, um, causing delays, staff will can, will outline completed and ongoing work for, um, from 2024 as well as planned projects for, for 2025. Uh, so the first item here is touching on, uh, residential development activity. If you read through our staff report, you'll see, um, I think some daunting numbers looking at our, our housing supply. Uh, as part of Goal 10 of the city's comprehensive plan, the city is responsible for monitoring building permit activity and presenting an annual report to the commission. Um, I want to follow up on that with this report here. Uh, this report includes data. What we're going to do this time is, uh, data on new building permit approvals from, uh, comparison of 2020 to 2024, multifamily land use approvals and residential land use, uh, residential land division approvals. Uh, so this information excludes, um, um, it, it excludes completed building permits as, uh, the certificate of occupancy is a function of Wasco County Building Code. So what we'll be providing you here are the permit numbers that the city has approved. And of course, at times there are delays between the time a building permit is approved to when a certificate of occupancy, um, is issued for a building. Um, and notably, you know, touching on this, there's no multifamily projects, um, that are listed. None of the multifamily projects listed in here have moved forward to that building permit phase. So something to think about when you look at these numbers. Uh, so looking at building permit totals in 2024, a total of 12 new residential dwelling units were approved. Um, this included five single-family homes, three duplexes, uh, one accessory dwelling unit and two replacement units. Uh, so replacement units are those that, um, you know, as, as it reads, those are that, um, replacing destroyed or damaged houses. Uh, we had one house burned down this last year, so there was, uh, that was considered a replacement unit. Also, when a, a manufactured home has come to the end of its life, we also issue, uh, replacement permits. Um, these are things to keep in mind. They are not an increase in our overall housing, uh, uh, inventory. It's really just, you know, replacing the house that was once there. So, um, that's why when you look at these numbers, that's, that's something that, the key to us that we always like to pull, point out, although it's a new building permit, doesn't really count as an increase to, to overall totals. Um, in 2024, a total, uh, excuse me, touched on that. Um, a detailed comparison is below. You'll take a look at, at see these numbers. Um, it has been a, a significant drop. We've seen a drop from, um, about a quarter of what we had in, in 2021. Um, and this is something, you know, in 2021, we approved 50 dwelling units. Um, this last year, we approved 12. So it's been a consistent drop that we've seen, not something that is, um, just in the Dals. It's a drop that we've seen throughout the state. There are barriers. It seemed like there was a peak right around COVID. There was still some momentum coming in, into COVID. COVID hit and things have slowed down drastically. Now we have just all types of, you know, rates and, and, uh, issues that we are concerned with here.
Uh, I was just curious if there was a percentage, uh, of a drop that you've seen through Oregon and then, uh, you know, in comparison to the, to the Dals city?
Yeah, I, I don't have the drop in Oregon, you know? I didn't compare that one, actually. Um, yeah, but thank you for bringing it up. I know that there was, there, there are a couple of numbers here and there. You know, I think some communities have, haven't seen as big of a drop. The Dals, and I think saw one, but no, we don't, we don't have those numbers, unfortunately. Um, in looking at this, one thing to keep in mind is, you know, according to all the hard work that you guys did that last year with the 2020, you know, adopting the Housing Needs Analysis. And that Housing Needs Analysis, um, it, it states that, you know, approximately about estimates about a 505 new dwelling units need to be built over 20 years to, um, basically to address forecasted growth that we have in our community. That breaks down to about 26 units a year. So therefore, as you can see, we're operating at about half right now. Um, also, there, there are some recent state changes coming with how, how Housing Needs Analyses are done. Um, those will significantly increase those numbers from 505. We may see an increase in the city of the Dals. We will see an increase. However, since we adopted in, um, the, with the last meth, methodology was used, we, we need to comply with those numbers. However, it is important that the city at least try to address the Housing Needs Analysis numbers that were adopted in 2023. Um, jumping ahead at, at multifamily development approvals, um, these are the numbers that I think, you know, are exciting, are optimistic for us. Um, in 2024, the city approved four land use development applications for multifamily totaling 206 units of multifamily, multifamily units here in the community. Uh, however, as I mentioned earlier, none of these have progressed to the building permit stage. Um, so there is, when you go through a multifamily process, multifamily development requires a land use approval. As, uh, Mr. Gomez just mentioned, was, was bringing up the, um, the land use approval for the Basalt Commons. So that was the first step in the development of the Basalt Commons project, and then it'll go on to a building permit. Sometimes with larger projects, you do see a bit of a delay between your land use approval and, uh, building permit submission. So these are just some that we wanted to provide to you. Um, not only the Basalt Commons, 160, 116 units. There's also new residential development out in Lone Pine, which is, uh, 78 units, which we approved at the beginning of this year. So, and that has kind of a mixture of townhouse apartments. Um, and then looking at residential land divisions, the city approved nine minor partitions resulting in the creation of 15 new parcels. And also one subdivision was approved just about two weeks ago. This is the creation of 14 new lots. This is over by, um, off Columbia View Drive. Um, we also, there are two additional subdivisions proposing, uh, 29 and six new lots that are currently under review. And after the staff report was actually, uh, reported, or we finished up the staff report, we have another subdivision coming in. So in the time I've been with the city, it was, it's been a big push by subdivisions lately. So it's just about now, the next step is getting those houses built on those new lots. Do you have a question?
Yeah, where are those, um, additional subdivisions, 29? Where are all these additional subdivisions here at the end of the?
Yeah, yeah. So the, um, the new one that was just approved, 14 units, as I mentioned, that one's out Columbia View Drive, so really on your way out of town going east. Um, 29 units, that's being proposed behind the hospital. So if you take like, uh, you know, View Court effectively, you go, there's kind of, you know, basically on the top of the hill back there. Um, six new lots is being proposed off of Ninth Street. Ninth Street, if, um, I don't know if anybody's familiar. Ninth Street is a section of, uh, roadway we have here in town that for the longest time, we had a, a house that was built in the right of way, 75 some years ago. So it really created an issue for us being able to move utilities into that area. So after some years, we were able to get that house removed. And now Ninth Street, which is, it'll be off of like right around Quentin, like Quentin and Ninth, right at the, uh, Hague, uh, Hague Park, Triangle Park, whatever you want to call it. Um, right over there, we just put in new utilities, and as soon as that happened, we had a sixplex coming in. So we are working through that one. It's actually going to be, we're going to follow the, the state's process. It's not adopted into our code yet, but we're going to follow the state's process for middle housing development. So a middle housing land division, this is something that the state calls out middle housing as anything duplexes, cottage clusters, triplexes. So this is actually a townhouse. cottage clusters, triplexes. So this is actually a townhouse setup, and we'll be able to process it through an expedited land partition process. We're working with the applicants now on that. So that's a that's a sixplex, a six-unit townhouse. The same developer property owner also is doing really the same design, but not as a subdivision model, just doing it as a sixplex multifamily over off of Ninth and Myrtle. So that's one of them that we called out in here, and they have actually, since this this staff report was was finished, that one has moved towards the building permit phase. So, you know, we are seeing some movement as far as our multifamilies. And you know, one thing to point out is, you know, it's noteworthy, it's it was in our Housing Needs Analysis. It's in the Housing Production Strategy. These multifamily developments are the first approvals multifamily the Dallas has seen since 2019. So it's really been a shortage in the Dallas. We it's definitely been a community where there's been a lot of single-family homes. In recent years, we have seen kind of an uptick of duplexes since we started allowing duplexes on all lots. And what was that, 2020, 2021, somewhere around then? So we do see an uptick in those duplexes, but multifamilies, we're still dragging behind. So as far as this Housing Production Strategy goes, we're trying to figure out what the barriers are to building multifamily because it is a definite need that we have in this community. Also, looking ahead.
What's that last one that you just that just came in when you're doing the staff report?
So there's another sixplex. Yeah, it's off of like Ninth and Myrtle. Yep, on the west side.
Sorry, I misunderstood. I thought that was this other. I thought that was the SPR 536-23.
Yeah, so that one has moved. That is approved since the staff report was finished. That one has now moved to the building permit level. So.
Sorry.
So next, want to touch on ongoing and completed code amendment projects. You know, at the 2024, the February 2024 meeting, there was a staff had a discussion, was actually our former senior planner that had conducted the conversation with you all, and it was kind of like taking a look at, you know, maybe prioritizing different things that you'd like to see done over this next year. So I kind of wanted to touch on a couple of those in this next section here. One of the things we talked about at that meeting, we also brought up not only, you know, prioritizing, you know, the commission's concerns, but also touching on some work that we had in the cooker. And one of those, the first one, is the these flood control provisions. So we were ready to move forward with adopting new floodplain maps. This is a very, very long process working with FEMA. We have currently, we use 1984 maps to determine where our floodplain lines are. These maps are wildly out of date. As you can imagine, the technology back in 1984 does not give us the accurate an accurate look at our at our property. FEMA started updating these maps in 2014, and we're still in the process of updating them. When we were in front of you last time, we had just finished up a 90-day appeal period. So they provided these these preliminary maps for the community to take a look at. The community, the community can then submit comment or submitted appeals. On behalf of the city, our department submitted a comment to FEMA to have them take a closer look at some of some of the streams, have them take a look at Mill Creek as well as Chennawith Creek. Because we saw some, there's actually Mill Creek, right at the Mill Creek, at the Second Street Bridge. That is really kind of that. That was the area when in 96, when downtown flooded, that was the area that really got clogged up. And as you can see on these floodplain maps, there is portions of the downtown that are now going to be in the floodplain with these updated maps. So we wanted to take a closer look to see if there'd be any change, and the information that we provided, we actually had them take a look. I was working with some of the FEMA engineers, so they're taking a closer look at some stream gauge data. And with that information that we received, they were actually to take that back. They provided enough significant change to these maps, so they're reworking the maps. But it means that we do get another 90-day appeal period. And when that starts, it'll, you know, at some point, following FEMA's timelines, sometimes it's a surprise when when it really comes to to fruition and these things are actually ready. So what I bring that up as far as the work that we're doing here is, once those maps are adopted, we'll be moving, the intent was to move forward with updating our flood code to be consistent with these new maps. So that's the flood map update has been a little bit on hold. But then it's something I'm going to touch on a little bit, and I've talked about it at previous meetings. On July 15th of this year, FEMA then came out and issued a state mandate, which issued introducing new floodplain requirements for all communities that are basically 200, what was it, 239 communities in the state are hit with these new provisions. They need to come up with something. They needed to make a choice on which option of a pre-implementation compliance measure that that they were going to choose and move forward to implement. And I'll get into that a little bit more. So there was a little bit in the middle of our map update. We were hit with this other federal mandate from FEMA. So I'm going to talk about that here in a little bit, and it's going to be some of the work that we're going to be working on.
I've got I've got a comment on these new floodplain maps. Have they taken into consideration that that the underpass on Union Street and First would act as a relief for a future flood on Mill Creek? When it flooded the last time, that underpass wasn't there, and that water backed up behind the highway and the and the old levee that was supposed to keep water out and basically kept it in. But if this happened again, a lot of that would just flow out through the underpass. You'd probably still have some flooded basements along First Street, but you'd keep the water level below the ground floor level.
Yeah, so it's that is information right there. That is a big change in our downtown from the 1984. We do see, though, it doesn't, although it does allow for for some water to flow out of that area, there is still the backup at the Mill Creek Tunnel. That is basically what causes a lot of that to back up. It's actually the city's Public Works Department is working with the Corps at this time to to try to get some funding to take a closer look at a study about upsizing or doing some modifications to those pipes to try to get more flow in the event that these flood events happen. So. But yeah, it's a good point. There was at one point a hole that went under, and it was a hole that provided, I think it was a passage for getting getting wheat over to the to the barges on the docks. But it wasn't the size, of course, that it is now. So. Our Housing Production Strategy is the next one to talk about. We've all been involved with that, you know, this past year. So the Housing Production Strategy, we will be taking a look at that. It is looking to finalize just in at the January meeting, one of our January meetings. I think the second one for City Council coming up, we'll be adopting the Housing Production Strategy. Have some information in there, but you were all, you know, really part of that. And the final draft, as I mentioned, coming up to council consideration in January. Full implementation of the Housing Production Strategy is expected to take eight years. So they're kind of broken up into the different actions that are in the HPS. They're outlined in in two-year increments for eight years. So actually, we just met with our consultant today to try to like, kind of taking in some of the comments that we heard about how to prioritize and get those things, get get a lot of those actions moving. Some of them are really like community initiatives, you know, working with our stakeholders to to identify land. Some of them are working on looking at, you know, establishing new urban growth, you know, or excuse me, urban renewal areas. And then some actually come down to code amendments. So these are, you know, a lot of the actions that we'll be implementing with the HPS will be in front of the Planning Commission to decide on on how best to fit some of those actions into our code. Land Division Standards, this was something that was discussed at the at the past meeting. This this work, the initial framework and research of this project is currently underway. It took a little bit of a delay on that one, but this is a this project includes a comprehensive review of the Dallas Municipal Code and our land division standards, land division. So we're looking at a partition subdivision, a law consolidation, property line adjustment, things like that. So the commission can tentatively expect to review some of the first aspects of that in the spring, spring, summer of this next year. Our sign code, this item was previously discussed at the February 2nd meeting. Project will include a comprehensive review of the Dallas Municipal Code sign regulations. Staff anticipates these revisions will require, this is a this is a big lift. The sign code is it's a it's a juggernaut of a code section. It's really big. It used to live on its own before it was codified into the Dallas Municipal Code. And when it was codified, there was some translation that didn't really come back in. So for instance, the sign code references code, references zoning, zoning districts that don't exactly line up with our code now. So there's it's it needs a cleanup. And we are targeting beginning work, spring, summer of 2025. It's going to take a while, so I'm not sure at at what point it's going to be in front of the commission for some first discussions on it. But we're going to take a stab at that this next year. Parking standards, we brought those up as, you know, potential work projects that we'd be working on this next year. Really, what that evolved into, it wasn't really any work to do with the municipal code. But what was brought earlier, there was a downtown parking assessment that was done. So this downtown parking assessment was for the entire downtown. The Salt Commons was mentioned earlier. There was something mentioned about an initial study and the final study. I think maybe some confusion there was that there was a parking study that was done specifically for the Basalt Commons and the vicinity of the Basalt Commons. And then we went one step further and did an entire downtown parking study. So from that, the numbers are very different because you're looking at a study area that is twice the size that there was with the Basalt Commons study. So there are some, you know, different numbers there. But we are looking to adopt that downtown parking study coming up in this first first part of this next year. I don't see any immediate changes to our parking regulations at this time. But really, what this parking study is going to do is it's going to provide us with a toolkit so we can grow downtown and have the tools to grow downtown. You know, there's some low-hanging fruit in our parking system downtown that we just could create more efficiency. For instance, a lot of communities paint Ts and Ls. I feel like I've been preaching this the past year. So many communities use Ts and Ls to efficiently park vehicles. We don't do it in the Dallas. So if you look at, there is wasted space out there, you know, I'm as guilty as anybody else. When you don't have those guides to know exactly where to park, you might be parking in a place where you're taking up two potential parking spaces. So it's just, this is going to give us the tools that we need to be a bit more efficient in our parking system. But really, what it came down to is the Dallas is operating on a very low threshold for occupancy at this time. So. Another project that we talked about that was going to turn into some more work was the West Side Area Study. And this is a real comprehensive look at our, basically, we call it the West Side Plan. It's now being referred to as the West Side Renaissance Plan. So this was a project that was pursued this last year as an application of a TGM grant with Oregon Department of Transportation and DLCD for the creation of this Integrated Land Use and Transportation Master Plan. Although we received strong support from various community stakeholders, I can't remember how many letters of support we submitted to try to get this grant. There was just limited funding on it, so therefore, the city did not receive funding to move forward with that. However, Wasco County did. So in our region, there was two of the three communities received funding. So it's kind of, it's a bummer to be the one left out, but unfortunately, the Dallas did not receive that. However, with Wasco County, they're updating their transportation system plan, which is very, very old. So it's it's a worthy project to have received funding. Staff anticipates contributing to this work over this next, probably the next couple of years. Not volunteering ourselves, but I imagine we'll be sitting on as some type of technical advisory committee when they start updating that. And despite the setback, we're determined to do it again. That's one thing we want to, we want to make sure that we get this moving forward. So taking a look at upcoming projects. That was, I just provided kind of a recap of different projects and updates for you. But these upcoming projects, touching here, the first one is is the big project we're going to be working on. This is FEMA's pre-implementation compliance measure known as the PICOM. This is ultimately, I'll go through it a little bit. There's some history behind it. It really settles on a federal lawsuit against FEMA. And it has trickled down now to impacting Oregon communities. So FEMA Region 10 mandated the jurisdictions participating in the National Flood Insurance Program adopt one of three PICOM measures by July 31st of this next year. This directive affects, as I mentioned earlier, 239 Oregon communities. This is really the result of some some lawsuits that were filed. Some environmental groups filed lawsuit against FEMA for failing to address the NFIP's environmental impacts. I won't get into the rest of the history, but we're at where we're at, where FEMA then issued a mandate July 15th to all these communities telling us that we needed to at least select one of these PICOM options. Or we run the risk of losing flood insurance protections, disaster relief protection. So there's been a lot of pushback throughout the state. There has been, I believe, I saw a letter from the governor being sent to FEMA. It's it was it was caught a lot of communities by surprise. And if FEMA clearly doesn't know Oregon land use, Oregon land use to adopt everything, this planning commission does. You know how long it takes. You know how long that those initial conversation takes to then have your meetings, to then get to to City Council, takes more than six months to adopt something. So we did on November 25th, City Council directed staff to pursue one of those options. This option is the Model Ordinance. So we were going to move forward with adopting the Model Ordinance. So that is a code change that will be in front of you. So we were able to meet that first deadline by December 1st. We had to choose an option. And now we were going to work on implementing, and we have until July 31st to implement. In that period of time, until we adopt a model ordinance, every development within the floodplain has to go through this new permit by permit. It's called the Permit by Permit, but it's basically a wetland inventory. And we have to do every single project, every single house has to go through a special site-specific study effectively. So that we're going to be leaning on FEMA a lot, technical assistance, I think a lot of communities are because, like I said, we don't have these types of things built into our code. If the Permit by Permit process was in our code, we would know how to process it. But it's going to take, it's going to be a learning curve, and we, you know, we're letting the community know that that we're going to be there, you know, every step of the way with them, walking them through, that, you know, we're going to learn just as they're learning. But that'll be something, just an additional, I would say, an additional bearing barrier to housing development is now tacking on this other this other permit until we adopt our Model Ordinance.
How much of the Dallas is in this updated FEMA floodplain area? Like, like, how much of an impact are we actually talking about? Is it more than you think?
So we say that the impact's 300 properties, and 300 properties is, you know, it's it's not exact, but 300 is overcompensating. So currently, with these 1984 maps, I think we have 120 properties. Once the map changes come, you know, once those maps are adopted, there's, I think, 120 more properties that are added in. And also with that, there's, my numbers are off, so I'm just going to say it's it was 299 is what we got to. And that includes properties that are currently in, properties that are going to be added. And it also accounts for properties that are being removed. And the reason we're adding them all together is because when we go through this process to update our code, we have to do something called a ballot measure 56, where we have to send out to every property owner that's going to be impacted by these changes. And while we have this map update paralleling at the same time, we want to be, we want every property owner that's being impacted, whether they're impacted today or impacted in 18 months. We want them to know that these regulations are changing. So we are going to effectively overnotice and and touch on every single property owner. We may send it to a property owner that 18 months down the road, when these maps are updated, this doesn't mean anything to them. But if they wanted to come into our office today and do something on their property, they're going to be impacted. So we want to make sure that the messaging is out there. So touching on the one other topic we have here is a use type review. Over this next year, staff will begin evaluating the the land use sections of the Dallas Municipal Code to ensure compliance with state codes, consistency and necessary updates. It involves, it will involve collaborating with. It involves, it will involve collaborating with community stakeholders to clarify the procedures for establishing new businesses. So this is a process that we have here called a change of use process. This was something that was actually flagged as of as a priority from our commission back in February. Um, and then this review, I believe, will assist with future discussions and implementing a city business license. If you didn't know, the city does not have a business license. Um, when a new business is established in the Dallas, they come through a process called a change of use, and this is our opportunity to make sure that the change from this use isn't, you know, we are addressing any impacts from this new use. Um, be honest, it's a little bit of a clunky system. So we want to, there has been enough conversation about a city business license, maybe at some point in the future. And I think going through this initial step on our end will maybe clarify and may might pave the way and make it easier for a conversation at a later date for a city business license. Additionally, this evaluation um could introduce new land use classifications in consultation with commercial and industrial property owners and adopting a standardized classification system that better addresses the impacts and necessary review procedures of unlisted uses. So what that is, is effectively, one thing that jumps out to me is breweries are not currently permitted uses in the city's industrial zone. That was one that jumps out to me, and it seems to me that that is a change probably that should be made. Um, so we can, you know, potentially try to encourage those types of developments in our in our industrial zone, if that's something that we'd like to do. But also taking a look, there's a lot of nuanced nuanced uses out there that may not specifically be spelled out in our code. So that actually, the city of Medford uses a process and they have this classification system where they can effectively say they are able to take those uses and get them into the use type that we currently have in our land use i- in each of our zones. So for a medical office, for instance, different types of medical offices are going to be broken up into their impact. And and it's a, it's a cleaner process. I mean, currently there is, there's language in the code code that says uh if a use is not permitted, um, it's basically up to the director's discretion to determine the, you know, um, the likeness of this with other uses. It's just a little subjective, so this will give us a process to really kind of narrow those things down. Also, the um their work will also involve, you know, updating some some outdated uses. Currently, we still, if the city, you know, everybody's familiar, we have a short-term rental license program here that was adopted in twenty twenty. Um, what it did is it actually um we retired the bed and breakfast and vacation rental permit process. So one's a license, one's a permit. There's still reference to bed and breakfast permit in our code, so it's really a cleanup. But unfortunately, it is a change that would require a ballot measure fifty-six. We can't just wipe it out of our code, even though it's a permit that's not issued anymore. We have to go through the process. So this seems like a proper time to do it, adding it in here. And also, we want to make sure that um we're in compliance with state law when it comes to residential care homes and uh childcare facilities, making sure that those are appropriate in the right zones and making sure that um our code doesn't require um over review of these types of facilities. Uh, there is no uh current timeline for implementation, but I do know I'll be meeting with, you know, a couple of our stakeholders just in this next month to kind of talk about some initial framework of this project. Um, and the last is that I wanted to highlight is the economic opportunities analysis. Um, beginning in twenty twenty-five, we will begin updating this. Um, I spoke to our consultant who's been working on it actually and uh just received a an updated quote on that. So this is an uh an update to the EOA and the Employment Buildable Lands Inventory. And it also results in some updates to Goal Nine of the Comprehensive Plan, which is our economic development um portion of the Comprehensive Plan. Uh, so the the city last completed an EOA in two thousand and six. Um, state law requires cities to maintain a twenty-year inventory of buildable land for employment and residential uses. Um, and this report would allow us to really take a look at what those update, you know, what those updated numbers are. You know, this is a project that has been discussed in front of this commission multiple times over the past five years. While significant progress was made in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, when we were last doing an update, it was never finalized. Um, so we need to move that forward um and get the thing adopted. And this updated EOA and BLI will also include, you know, proposed amendments to the Comprehensive Plan. Um, Goal Nine, and um as I mentioned, there was a lot of work that was already done on this, but it's um it can be kind of a contentious issue. Um, really what it comes down to is the state has methodology that we have to show how much of our land is committed or uncommitted. And that is based off of ultimately if there's development on the property or not. So for many, many years, Google or Design LLC has owned mass amounts of acreage in our industrial land. But their development has staggered over years and years of development. I think what, the the initial DLS site is now twenty years old, or they started construction twenty years ago. So Google has had a lot of property in our industrial area for a very long time. But just most recently, we had, just this last year, we had the approval of their their new data center facility on a ninety-acre parcel. The last time we did this economic opportunities analysis, locally, we were trying to express that this land is is very much committed because Google owns it. They haven't, they will build on it. But state methodology says that we can't use that until a building permit approval has actually occurred. So now those numbers will really shift and really show us the deficiency of employment land that we really have in this community. And it, and it's a real, you know, we, we have a housing crisis, but employment land is a real crisis too, I think, in this community that that um some, you know, some know about, and I think, you know, those that are really working on it, um Commissioner Pippenage is very familiar, working with it. Um, we have a difficult time reviewing, uh, you know, recruiting large employers, you know, industrial land. A lot of times you need a lot of acreage for industrial development. And if we don't have that to offer, we can't recruit and bring in certain types of businesses. So it's really important for us to know what our numbers are and um come up with initiatives in our comprehensive plan to to address that and to be able to promote new business and economic growth in this community. Uh, so with that, um, really just these, you know, um, these are here for reference. Just wanted to provide the the review of the work that we've done this last year, as well as things that are coming up this next year. Um, our key priorities would be, this next year, we'll be implementing the Pickham. We'll be implementing um the housing production strategy. The housing production strategy, I think, you know what I told somebody today is that that was a big process, the housing production strategy. But um now the real work begins. There's nineteen different actions that come out of the housing production strategy we're doing over the next eight years. So the real work's going to begin and we're going to be working on um and we're going to hit the ground running. So. I just wanted to, you know, give you all the opportunity, welcome your insight, um, discussion this evening. I think everybody's been pretty open to ask me questions as we've been going on. I'm happy to answer any more questions, elaborate on it, and really just want to, you know, thank everybody for your dedication and valuable contributions with with the planning commission. Um, you do a lot of good work and um I'm excited for for this next year and hopefully we'll have some more meetings and some really great topics and and projects and and discussions going forward. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions?
Uh, how's the staffing going?
Staffing?
Staffing in the, in the office?
Yeah, um. Yeah, we're right about fully staffed. Yep, yeah. So um, yeah, it's good. Um, it's actually kind of neat. Our uh our former senior planner, and that's a great segue, Commissioner Grant, and I feel like I got right into this without uh without, you know, an embarrassing introduction. Um, this is our, sitting next to me is our new senior pan, uh, senior planner, Sandy Freund. She comes to us most recently from um some place in Arizona. Um, but she has many, many years of Oregon land use experience. We're very excited to have her here. Um, she's, she's already, you know, been a great team member. She will be overseeing, she'll be working with me overseeing a lot of the long-range planning stuff. But also she's, a lot of her experience has been working in current planning. So, you know, just having someone with so much expertise. I don't want to put a number on it, but um many, many years of doing planning, so we're very excited to have her. And she's also going to be overseeing our Historic Landmarks Commission. So um just want everybody to welcome Sandy and.
Welcome. Yeah, thank you.
So yeah, good, uh, thank you. Thanks for the reminder.
So so staff now is you, Paula, Sandy.
And yeah. Yep.
Frank, see ya. Is it, and that's it?
That's in the planning department.
The plan department, yeah.
Yep.
Great. Any other questions or? You like that? All right, that that can transition to staff comments and project updates, but I kind of feel like.
Feel like I just did that.
Talked a lot about the project.
I just did that. Not from losing my voice here.
Okay. Um, any commissioner comments or questions?
Great.
Just appreciation for all the work that's going on in the department and all the work to come this year.
Yeah, we got planned to do, which is awesome.
Yep.
Okay, gang. Media adjourned. Thank you.
Right.